Yeah, it's a good thing you're doing this.
Okay, as we're recording.
United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Call a meeting to order. We have a quorum. I will take a motion to approve the agenda in minutes.
So we'll.
You know, second. I have motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Rich.
Morning.
Morning.
Um. Four things, we are. We had Purple Wave come in. We've got some stuff on Purple Wave for sale. Um, so we want to try and wanted to get rid of for a while. We are gonna get rid of the two semi-tractors we have. Just because they're just.
Sure.
They're they're not worth sticking more money into. If we need something else, we'll get something for. A reasonable price that's gonna be a little bit in better shape. So we're gonna put an ad in the paper. We didn't. I kind of things kind of accelerated pretty fast for me. So we're gonna put a notice in the paper that we are selling stuff. On Purple Wave, so the public can can bid on it too. But it's been live, I think, since last week, so. Hopefully people are watching this too, and then yeah. Then they can go look at it too. But uh. Seem to be getting some fairly reasonable numbers for some things already early on. So not so much, but we're gonna have to notice out. Uh, we've been receiving a lot of applications for the. Uh administrative assistant upstairs. Um, we'll probably start. Start doing some interviews here soon. I'm way behind. Need to get them local plans done, and I'm still struggling with the DOTs. New system with plans, but I'll get it. I just, it's been slow. So once I figure it out, the other one will should go faster, but. Just working through all that mess.
Okay.
Other than our blatant roads, we got pretty moisture now, so bring shoulders in and blatant. Getting the maps, put together paint. And rock them.
Good.
Yeah.
You guys got any other questions for?
I don't.
Today.
Thank you, Richard. Uh. Drainage, I see we had some stamped warrants.
Motion to approve stamp warrants. I can second that.
I have a motion in a second on stamp warrants. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Uh, claims.
Motion to approve the claims.
In a second.
Say.
The motion is second to approve the claims. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Payroll.
Payroll claims. Motion to pay the payroll claims.
Well, second. I have a motion second to approve the payroll claims. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Any place?
Yeah, perfect word report.
Motion to approve court report.
It's my second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Any? Payroll out. Yes, we do.
Oops, sorry. Didn't very far.
Here.
Well, the sheriff on Don Knudsen, John Smith. And Jesse Luther.
Motion to approve the payroll. Change claims.
We're all.
I'll second it. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Any place on these three? This one's got AJ on it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, cuz he wasn't here.
Yeah.
Sorry, I forgot.
I just caught that, and I didn't know if there's someplace else in there that I was supposed to, or not.
Nope.
He was.
Residing church.
Yeah, he took out the debt, not you.
Yep.
You put your name on the five point seven.
Figured we were sick.
Thanks.
Um. I have a liquor license on.
It's a five there.
Five there?
That Winans Creek or whatever.
Motion to approve the liquor license in Winans Creek.
I have motion in a second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Where do you want this signed at?
Well, there's way either way in back and backside. You know, they could put signature lines in there.
Yeah.
They want to do all this stuff. That should be, that should be a one-page application. That's ridiculous.
That's a brand new form.
Yeah. Stuff get worse. Especially better, and it's always worse.
Is there anything else? I don't see anything on the agenda there.
More.
Well.
Not a paper.
Kill my theories already.
I guess we are down to board appointments. Anybody for eminent domain and NIGHOG?
I got maybe on the eminent domain. Still working.
Still working on eminent domain?
And I go.
Okay. Um. Wouldn't work. Betco, Melissa, we're down to you. Are you on?
Morning.
She's.
Yeah, she is.
Just wrapping some stuff up. Last week. You guys hear me okay?
No, that's what's on her end.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear you, Melissa.
No, she's not.
You certainly.
You heard microphone.
We've got this before.
Yeah.
She knows sign language.
Keep working on her.
Okay.
Arcane air.
Yeah.
You hear us, Mark? Apparently. Yes, so huh, that's weird. Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Melissa.
All your chat. No, thank you.
Yep.
Yep. Have fun and good morning. Uh. EMS continued discussion. Well, I did. I sent an email to Janie. Probably know this. On sports betting money.
Okay.
She said the House has set money aside, but the Senate killed it, so it's done with for this year.
A doctor.
No, good place to spend it, but.
Thanks a lot, Sam.
Anything else you guys got on it?
I don't know.
Uh. Chris isn't here. Uh. Our wastewater, these is.
Jason's workman. That we should be getting hold of those people here shortly. Get that going.
I noticed.
Cause we got a lot that. Like say, let's have a discussion with them. Let's put a. Add or put a thing in the paper, posting that we're gonna change rates, public hearing and.
Yeah.
It's hard. It's always change.
He's been working on it for quite some time.
Yeah.
And I see according to Chelsea, stuff that she put out, we're. Near in fifty thousand in the hole, and we still got a couple of months to go here.
Yeah, yeah, we've had. I know we've had extra expenses this year, but.
Still.
Still.
Yeah, right. We need to.
Yeah.
No, it needs to, no, it needs to get to where it needs to. They need to come up, so.
You wanna touch base with them?
Yeah, I'll reach out to him again this week.
Yeah.
I just talked to him two weeks ago about it, so. I'll reach out again. Keep hammering on him.
Uh, department head discussions. Anything, Dan? Anybody? Is there anybody else on there that has anything?
See many chats.
I don't either.
Nothing from Teresa.
Um. Supervisor Weekly. I had, uh, partners for children this last week, and we basically went through our financials and the new contracts. And then I had North Iowa Children's Alliance. And we're still looking for a citizen board member there. We're short one board member, so. Anybody's got a parent or somebody that's.
From Worth County.
From any Worth, yeah, any one of the counties, yeah. Which could be Sarah Water Worth or. Um. Hancock. And zero to five year olds that wanna work with them. So. We did decide that Sarah Water County is gonna be our new fiscal agent for county board, which is.
Okay.
They have been in the past, so they decided to keep doing that.
Good.
Well, other than that, I went to the, uh, thirtieth anniversary for Winworth Vetco and. I was an enjoying night and a really good speaker. I thought. So that's about all I had for the week. Oh, and then. I did, okay, those pads in the back for. Kevin, which was, I did that over a week and a half, two weeks ago, so.
Sure.
But. He had to fix some spots back there.
Good.
That was my week.
I had, um. NITOG Monday night. Um, just getting the budget tightened up and done for the year, um. Made a few changes with wage, wage adjustments, but, uh, other than that, that budget's. Pretty well good to go. Um. And then also had a conference call with John Day and also Kirk Paulson. Just little discussion on the the pipeline loan stuff, which we're kinda just gonna hold until we know. Until the USDA gets their approval on that facility, then we'll start working on the next steps, so. But until then, we're spinning in a holding pattern. And then, um. Had a, uh. Little meeting with with Val and Jacob Pagan from Boltman Make and, uh. Norfolk's mayor and public works director. Yeah, I just had some discussion on that drainage district. One south here. Yeah, fourteen. Uh, nine. What we think. But. Northwood would. If, uh, Northwood would benefit anything from draining or not, so had some good discussion. Jacob's gonna go through. He's got most of his report. Um, he's gonna go through and make some changes, and then bring it all back to us here. Uh, probably within the next month, so. And then I think we'll have a meeting on that one probably once. The farming kinda mellows out, so probably June or July soon. But once he gets that report finalized, he'll bring it back to us, so. And then, yeah, I went to work with Brett Go Thursday night. Very, very good. Debbie Durham is very good speaker. Lot of knowledge, and there's still a lot of opportunities out there for for grant monies and stuff like that, too. They're still pushing downtown.
Downtown.
Downtown big time. They're really trying to keep everybody float there, so. Lot of opportunities with the IEDA and Iowa Finance Authority, so they had very good presentation there, so that's all I had.
Good. Okay. I had wellness, um. We just went over how we're doing. We're doing good there. Uh, when it was brought up, there's still a lot of people confused on when you can get your physicals and can't. It is in the calendar year. It's not in fiscal year. So I mean, it's there's confusion with providers too, that they think that it has to be a calendar year or fiscal year, and it's not. It can be as long as it's a calendar year.
Yeah, cuz I don't mind. I'll.
Yeah.
Personally, is. Mine's pushing the October.
Yeah.
Deadline, and it's like, well, your last one was October eighth or what, so we have to be after that. I gotta.
Technically, if you can get them to change, you could go like next March. I mean, you know.
Yeah.
It's or whenever you want it, maybe.
They walk out. I'll let her know that. So if you just that, yeah, to fund it. Once per calendar year, regardless of if it was October, March, six months apart.
Yes, you should be able to get it moved so it'd be in a different, let's stay out of that fiscal year, that's cool. So we did that. We had that. There's a walking challenge coming up, so if you are wearing your foot beds, uh, or if you're registered by SAG, I mean, you know. It automatically counts. It's a chat. It's a countywide challenge, and I think last year we fared pretty well on that. I guess I didn't participate last year, but. I'm automatically participating this year, so. Uh, so something to keep in mind. And then we had safety committee meeting. I'm just, uh, you know, went over. Nothing happened with any of the employees or anything in the last month or two, which is good. Um, and, uh, we're working on possibly just doing a. Other countywide, you know, checking all the buildings for safety and putting the courthouse and talking with department heads and stuff, just to. Make sure everybody's getting what they need or think they want or whatever, so, um, we're looking at doing that, but that's all I had.
Okay. Uh. You see anything we need to add on next week's agenda?
What's on the resolution?
Resolution. Yeah. You already got that one down, so.
Nothing else coming up that I will.
Well, in that case, I will recess the regular meeting till nine and a half.
Okay.
There you go. All right.
I will take a motion to open the public hearing.
I will make motion open the public hearing.
I will second it.
I have a motion a second open the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. The public hearing is on the FY twenty-three budget amendments.
There's a lot going on in the budget amendment. I hope I hit everything. Um. The. General obligation bond bonds are going to be happening on May twenty-four, so I put those in there along with the associated costs. Um, it's going into, uh, I had talked to Elizabeth, and we're gonna put it into a capital fund, so we can track it better. So it's all gonna be in that capital fund. And all the ins and outs will go out of, out of there. Um. And then I just, I made a new number with your department number, so I hope that pulls it to there. I hope. We'll find out, and I use that zero two zero zero for roads. So that should.
Yeah, that zero two zero can be used for roads and bridges, so.
Okay. And then, um, the other thing was, um, conservation. They received money. And then, um, they spent money on, um. Playground equipment that should be winged out soon. Um. The disaster emergency, the contribution to hazmat. I was like a hundred and thirty bucks short, so I gotta put that in there. Um. Medical examiner. I'm just always nervous about that one, so I put another five thousand in there just in case.
Mm-hmm.
Insurance between. Um, liability property, unemployment. Um, those have all gone up, and I am just putting hopefully. Enough to get by there. Um, juvenile justice, that's another one that we're, it's just an unknown, so I'm putting another ten in there. Um. And then general services, there's always something that needs to get fixed, and LP must have been crazy this year, is that was higher. Um. And then, um, there was nineteen hundred and twenty-one forty-eight or something like that, that, um. I needed to, I need to send back to the, um. To the region. Because it came after July one. This or this fiscal year, so I gotta send it to them, so we're zeroed out, and there shouldn't be any more money that goes into that fund, and we should be able to just close it out. Um. Then the rest of it is for the law. Are there any questions?
Yep. Anybody got any comments or questions? So anybody on Zoom with any comments or questions?
Might have to put it in the chat if you got a question, cuz I don't know how to get you.
That's true, yeah.
Is there any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none?
Nary, nary.
What's that?
No, excuse me.
Oh, okay. Hearing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So.
I'll second it.
On motion a second, close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Public hearing is closed. I will. Reset, uh.
Reconvene.
Reconvene the regular meeting. And then I'll have to recess until nine thirty.
Oh, yeah, I got old bits. Right?
Oh.
Perfect. You think? Yeah.
That's, yeah. Are we still recording, Jackie?
She's weren't taking notes, or so.
I'm sorry. You've got your hands full. We were expecting a couple more.
Yeah, I I thought we talked to a dozen guys and thought about this job.
Well, must've changed their mind.
Yeah, a big job.
And they went and drove it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they didn't even look at it. That should have been cleaned up twenty years ago.
No bets.
It's nine thirty. I will reconvene the regular meeting, and we will have the DD two project bids.
Yeah, so we're here today for the DD two open ditch repairs. Uh, work one tail, about thirty-two stations of free clearing. Um, cleaning out under the interstate. Uh, lowering a private culvert in a county culvert. And. Yes, and our estimate was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and we have. A, there is, there was one addendum to the, uh. Original bid package. Uh. Will require the addendum for it to, for the bid to be considered. Uh, bidding on. The private culvert lowering. Would be considered, uh. Acknowledging the addendum.
Okay.
Um, state of Iowa.
Florida. Oh, no, 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 the up on that upper what lateral up there, whatever it is, yeah.
It's not on Gores land.
Yeah.
I just held them.
Yeah.
They have a twenty foot thirty-six inch.
Right.
Crossing.
Yeah.
Um, state of Iowa law requires that bids are in a separate, uh, envelope, looks like. Uh, both of our bids, we have two bids today. Looks like both of them. Meet that. And, um, before we get an opening, we'll. It's so everybody know, you know, we'll take the cursor. We look at these, but we'll take these back to the office afterwards. Make sure all the. Eyes are dotted, teeth are crossed, check all the numbers. Um, shouldn't take very long with only two bits, but, uh. Yeah, with that, we'll get started, so. Uh, first contractors, A one excavating out of Joyce. And. Open up the bid bond first. And I sliced it in half as I.
I.
But.
Do that pretty regularly.
Books in order.
Get out the tape.
See if you can stay above the fold line.
We added a lot in.
Yes. We'll see if the bid acknowledged. Addendum eight. So item two or six. Yes. All right. So the addendum is acknowledged. And. Looks like our total bid. Is four hundred eighty-one thousand dollars.
So a little bit over one twenty-five?
Yeah.
One more bit, we'll see.
Next, uh, that is from Larson Contracting out of Lake Mills. And we're open their bid bond. Looks to be in order.
We got one on the pressure, but. We found out about that. That's the one that was gonna drop off. Over the weekend and.
And addendum one has been acknowledged. And the total bid comes out to one hundred forty-six thousand, nine hundred fifty-one dollars and thirty cents. Again, that was a hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred fifty-one dollars and thirty cents. And that. Concludes, concludes. The bids, um, so we will. Take these back. It looks like for now the low bidder is Larson Contracting. Out of Lake Mills. And we'll just make sure everything is in order back at the office, and at the next, at the next board meeting, we'll, uh. Recommend. Uh. The contractor, if if the board still finds that the price is acceptable.
Yeah, we probably do some calling. See why they're a little higher than what we estimated. I mean, the trees is. I can see why it's a little higher. Tree is a real shot in the dark, kind of an estimate for those. Yeah, so I will give some calls. But I always spoke to Doug before this. See what they were invested. It was just the trees. It's not a tree. Hundred forty-six, twenty thousand, well, yes, it isn't.
No.
Actually, that.
You're at one twenty-five, right?
Yeah, that's. Yeah, one twenty-five.
That isn't that much there.
No.
That didn't include our, uh, dent, uh, then though, which probably added another couple thousand.
Because I guess when we were looking at this earlier, I thought you were talking over three hundred, but. For some reason, I thought that was what we were talking about in the hearings earlier.
You said thirty. Two stations.
Thirty-two today.
With your hundred foot. Thirty-two stations. Thirty-two hundred feet of heavy trees. Sorry, no, that's ditch clean out. And the spoke.
Yeah.
Thirty-two stations of ditch clean out.
Okay.
Free clearing on the whole thing.
Okay, okay.
Free clearing on the whole thing.
What's it? Do you have any of the approximate footage of?
Trees.
Trees.
Well, the ball that we know is right here.
When it's too big, there's the the big chunk right here on that ground at the Dennis Stones, and there's. Another big chunk of it on lateral H. Just south of where Stevens.
Could be.
Four hundred sixty.
Yeah. Stevens got some land down.
Yeah. That's where the bulk of it is, but we did have as part of it. That, uh. I put that. They would drive the whole thing, and even if there was just a mulberry tree, they pluck it out.
I would say, cuz even down there were, well, Carol Abbe had taken out a bunch or that, or tennis take up, but there's probably need to be some updating in there too.
Yeah, so yeah, my plan is to have them drive the whole, drive the whole thing.
Clean.
Clean, pluck on anything that they've got along the whole way.
Perfect.
Cuz we talked with our spray guy a couple of weeks ago, and we told him to hold off. It's DD two, a portion of that was supposed to be done this year, but we're told to hold off until we knew. All this was gonna be done.
And there was some beaver dams in that upper section, I guess, that somebody would probably come in and pluck out here too.
And that was. When you're there. We'll probably see more stuff to add. Beaver dams.
Right.
Or pipes that have broken off, things like that.
Which is understandable.
Just makes sense to add is, we would add, we'd do them as an org or anyways, and let us add them to the contract. We're gonna just pray. I don't think they're. No, too bad. I had estimated eighty on the clearing grub. I mean, he has eighty-nine, which was actually pretty close for. Both of us, probably both, let's just kind of shoot in the dark on that one.
Yeah, we've done tree counting before, and we've used, I think it's the Iowa DOT's like. Tree units, but talking to everybody, nobody seems to really know what a unit is when it comes to tree clearing, and so it doesn't seem very helpful.
The number everybody, it's a guideline you're supposed to use, but nobody knows what the guideline is. I mean, I really told them. I mean. You ask to go count trees, it's basically like how. How thick that amateur, I mean, we're just, we're just making them up pretty much as we're out there.
Yeah.
Sorry, come bugs, dude.
Yeah, and then pretty large ditches. Part of the best thing we've done is what me and Alex did on that Lafayette, Western Iowa, where. We counted. Part of it, and then we used aerial photos to kind of.
Yeah.
Paint the rest of it based on our ground counting of a portion.
And that was, yeah. And that was, yeah, there was. Acres of trees on that one, it wasn't like this, it was two hundred feet wide right away. Figure out everything for miles, so that was an easier one to estimate, but. You guys are, I guess we've all, but as right now, I don't think this seems that bad.
I know, and.
Yes, yeah, and we. Yeah, yeah, it was, I assume, and what I thought.
Like you say. It's a crapshoot, when you do that stuff, you just kinda guess and you hope you guess. Time right.
Cause he was a little bit on D six.
Yes.
Yeah, and this is kind of similar work.
Yes.
Yeah.
But maybe that's why.
Almost identical work.
Yeah.
So, uh, but yeah, we worked with Harrison, so if you guys all know.
Is that who this was?
Yeah. We worked with them years ago.
Well, in that case then, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, I have a motion of second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. Aye, meetings adjourned, thank you, gentlemen.